Good evening and welcome to the May Board of Commissioners meeting. We did meet in executive session before tonight's meeting to discuss a real estate issue. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Here.
Mr. Oliva.
Here.
Here.
Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Here. Chief, could you lead us in the pledge?
Officer Oliva. The United States of America, the Republic of the United Nations, our God, physical, legal, and justice.
Going to be a slight change in the agenda tonight. Our initial item will be the appointment of an interim commissioner to the Fifth Ward. Due to the sudden passing of Fifth Ward Commissioner Andy Lewis, a vacancy exists on the Board of Commissioners. As difficult as it is at this time, our charter does require that the Board appoint someone within 30 days of the passing. This person will serve, well, the person who is appointed will serve until the first regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners following the November election, at which time the elected person would complete Andy's unexpired term. Commissioner Siegel, would you make a motion?
Mr. President, can I just jump in one quick second?
Sure, Mr. Berman.
Mr. Berman. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I, you're absolutely right. I mean, and it does seem like we're being insensitive moving so quickly, but, you know, the law is such that we do have to make a decision within 30 days, and, you know, it has to be done, you know, and get it done quickly. So, I just don't want anyone out there to think that the Board or anyone's being insensitive. It's just a matter of law that we have to move with this, in this fashion.
Thank you. Commissioner Siegel?
Thank you. Motion to appoint Bernard McCabe Sr. to serve as Fifth Ward interim commissioner until such time as a successor is elected and duly sworn in according to the Township Charter.
Seconded by?
Commissioner Oliva.
Commissioner Oliva. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. President?
Yes.
President, I move we close nominations.
Second. Second. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Mr. McCabe.
Mr. Oliva.
Mr. McCabe.
Mr. McCluskey.
Mr. McCabe.
Mr. Siegel.
Mr. McCabe.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. McCabe.
Mr. Wexler.
Mr. McCabe.
Mr. Quinn.
Mr. McCabe.
Mr. McCabe. Mr. McCabe, you want to come forward? Congratulations. The next item on the agenda will be the Civil Service Commission and Police Department Sergeant's List.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, Janet has to go first, I'm sorry Janet.
Ms. Pacella.
To the recent motion of one of our sergeant, that's created a vacancy for the position of Sergeant, therefore in the Civil Service Commission, I've created a certified list, which I'm presenting to the Board to be approved by a final vote, a formal vote, excuse me, for the, for the list, the certified list.
Okay, is there a motion to accept?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Sergeant's List.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Read the names.
You vote.
Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
McCabe?
I will recuse myself based upon my role on the Civil Service Commission and this decision.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
That's it. All right, to fill the vacancy, to fill the vacancy, I'll read three names for consideration, and again, the Board will engage in a formal vote. In first place was Robert McCree, second Matthew Murray, and third Michael Kenny.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Demilio.
If you make a motion to appoint Robert McCree Sergeant?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quinn, are there any other nominations?
Motion to close?
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Mr. McCree.
Mr. Oliva.
Mr. McCray.
Mr. McCluskey.
Mr. McCray.
Mr. Siegel.
Mr. McCray.
Mr. McCabe.
Recuse myself based upon my role on the Civil Service.
Mr. Holmes?
Officer McCray.
Mr. Wexler?
Officer McCray.
Mr. Quinn?
Rob, um, um, Rob, um, McCray.
Dr. Hart?
Officer McCray.
Congratulations. Rob is here with his wife Carrie and his son RJ and daughter Claire, so she'll do the honors of hitting the badge on Sergeant McCray. Go away. Sergeant McCray was hired by the Haverford Township Police Department in 2009. It was Rob's dream to come work for the township he grew up in. Prior to coming to Haverford, Rob worked for the Chester City Police Department and the Borough of Upland. Rob is a graduate of St. Joseph's University, where he received his degree in criminal justice. During his time here at Haverford, Rob has been assigned to Patrol Division, Special Operations Unit, Narcotics Unit, Bike Unit, and is a member of the Delaware County Merc Team. Rob has received two lifesaving accommodations, three unit accommodations, and two letters of commendations. Rob, congratulations. I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank the Commissioners as usual for supporting the police department and for the hard work that the Civil Service Commission does for all the interviews and testing. Thank you.
Congratulations. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, the Citizens Forum. The first letter is from Lucia Schlossberg, who has some questions. What is, in guard to the Haverford Township Public Library, what is the cost of the renovation? How is the parking situation being resolved? Is the existing building historic? If so, what types of grant programs or tax incentives has the Board explored to help with the cost of renovation? When will the residents be able to see plans and designs for the renovation?
The next letter is from John Williams, 730 Panmore Road, Haverford, PA. Dear Mr. Berman and Commissioners, I wanted to communicate to you that as a taxpayer, I oppose the township accepting the dedication of Jack's Way. This is a cul-de-sac that serves perhaps six houses, and I fail to see how acceptance of this roadbed will contribute to the public good. How often can we expect the public to use this road? If erroneously classified as a public road, Jack's Way being a dead end will in no way increase the traveling convenience of the public. Instead, the acceptance of the roadway will be, in my opinion, an increase in Haverford's expenses, which along with its taxes are already high. Acceptance of such a dedication would however function as a subsidy to the developers' buildings, developments builder at taxpayers' expense. Please consider the example of Redner Township, which in recent years has generally not accepted dedications of short cul-de-sacs. With that in mind, I strongly urge the Commissioners not to accept Jack's Way. If the Commissioners wish to possess the sewer, I would suggest a revised deed in which the sewer alone is accepted. The next letter is from Tony Morinelli, Harford Hall, Mill Road. Commissioners, I would like once again to offer my website to the township. The site contains the carefully researched history of each neighborhood in Haverford Township. You may make any adjustments, editing, or alterations as you see fit. I would be happy to maintain the site with continuing information. I would hope that a distinction may be made between the value of the site to the community and any personal opinions.
And finally, there's a rather lengthy letter from Doug Wolf, who lives on, in, on Milbrook Lane in Haverford. The letter is really too long to read in its entirety, but I will read the beginning and the conclusion.
Dear Haverford Township, Haverford Township Board of Commissioners, I would like to respectfully voice my opinion and concern about a problem that's been occurring here within the Milbrook Neighborhood, Fifth Ward. Hopefully, this can help to identify the source of the problem and hopefully enable you to find a better solution. To begin, it is of my opinion and belief that the Haverford School has been excessively using and abusing parking privileges here within our community. They do not have enough on-campus parking for their students, and as a result, an excessive use of signage has instead been installed by the township throughout the neighborhood here in an effort to keep these streets safer and to ward off the students from parking, specifically in those areas identified by a no parking sign. It is now, though, the residents who live here who have come to suffer by way of the school's excessive use of our neighborhood streets. It is the township's response now to continue increasing the use of this signage as the problem continues to get worse by more, adding more and more signs yearly due to the school's overuse of these public streets. Effectively, this has created an unfair bar to the residents and their ability to be able to park in front of their own homes or otherwise in front of neighbors' homes or elsewhere, otherwise due to this signage. This effective bar continues as long as the students occupy the entire roadway throughout the entire day and via the placement of these restrictive signs being placed everywhere. Essentially, the school's excessive use of our residential neighborhood streets has caused our neighborhood streets to be used as something otherwise, being used instead as a school parking lot wherever the signs are not. And because the school has left their driving students with no other choice and nowhere else to park, all day long, parking continues within our neighborhoods. Many signs have been put up permanently as installed by the township in an attempt to alleviate the student parking problem. Complained of by many over the years here within the community, safety concerns have been raised, and safety is very relative to this concern. Safety is also relative to this complaint and objection hereby as well, a concern that the school has so far as yet to acknowledge. The increase in these signs include limitations on our ability to park here as well. They include no parking in some areas, some special exceptions for residents only, but not their guests, and some limit our neighborhood parking ability to only two hours due to all of this, all of which has been unanimously approved for adoption within this neighborhood by the Board of Commissioners, all to keep the students from parking on these streets where the problems are complained of or where problems of safety-related concerns have occurred. As a solution to our problem, yet without seemingly having truly identified the root of the problem, as to why this is, why is this happening, and where is it all coming from, the Board of Commissioners gives unanimous approval to more and more of these signs. A true understanding and true resol- realization of where the problem comes from must be recognized and known as to how it is affecting the residents here. It is essential to have this understanding and important for all to know in order to effectively solve the problem, rather than creating more and more problems down the road with approval of more and more signs. It is also important to know that we are currently being severely prevented from freely using our streets in front of our homes as intended and as bargained for, a privilege that was created to this use that is now being diminished, taken away, and denied. In conclusion, the situation in my opinion has been just that, abusive, dangerous, and costly to all the residents here within the township and within this community, all in many ways described. It has been costly for the people of this township who have had to pay for the cost in installation of these additional new signs, none of which anyone had ever at all agreed to or accepted as being a true answer to the real problem. For many, they do not even know what they are paying for, yet they still have to pay. The residents here within the Fifth Ward in particular are the ones who have suffered the most by all of this and the ones who are being caused to accept this parking condition of imposed regulations through our representative capacity of the Board of Commissioners through approval by the Board for something that true and just or proper solution to this problem, and because we are all in fact being caused to pay for something that really never should be, therein creates yet another problem by way of not properly identifying the source of the problem and for not finding the correct cure to the problem. Through this imposed force by the school, for to now, or to now do nothing at all and for not coming up with an answer to the problem for the people of a problem that they create, it is therefore now then up to the township to help the people find a better way and a more proper, correct, and acceptable way to answer this problem. This way, we the taxpayers as residents won't have to suffer any further and will no longer be forced to endure more of the abuse and control regulation of these streets within our neighborhood. Thank you for listening and thank you for understanding and for your hopeful consideration to this and for all, for hopefully staying Resolution P. 8, 2021, Item 14, and for hopeful further stays on this, further sign-related resolutions concerning this issue and instead finding a hopeful, satisfactory, better resolution to the problem. Thank you very much for listening and thank you for all your appreciated attention to this matter, respectably submitted, Doug Wolf. And Mr. Wolf, I apologize for not reading your whole letter. Typically, the citizens' comments are limited to three minutes, so this would, a letter would have gone on for quite much longer. That's the last of the letters, Mr. Berman, is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes, Dr. Semirad had requested an opportunity to speak, so I'm going to allow her to speak now.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Dr. Gail Fralley Semirad, and I'm the president of the Brinford Civic Association. And I just want to introduce myself, since we are having a new ward commissioner, and just talk a little bit about what Brinford Civic Association is, what our areas and what our goals are, and to welcome our new commissioner and extend the working olive branch to work together with them on all the different projects that Brinford Civic Association is involved in. So for those of you that aren't familiar with Brinford, Brinford is basically, if you're looking at the map of Haverford, think about Haverford Avenue and County Line and Haverford Avenue and College Avenue, everything in between all the way up to San Marino on our other borders. So, we're going to be including the Polo Field, we're going to be including Preston Field, and all the various and diverse businesses and residential homes in the area. Our goal is basically to support our, our community and to work together and to make sure that we have a very even and very working relationship between business and residential, because we do really border a lot of different businesses. We're very active when it comes to zoning issues that happen in Brinford, and so you'll probably see representatives, you may even hear someone today talking, you know, addressing some of the zoning issues that we're facing presently. You know, with COVID, we, with, with our history, they started in late 60s, early 70s with the Civic Association for Brinford, and, you know, there were very active years and there were some inactive years, but in March of 2020, we elected a new slate of officers, and I was fortunate enough to be one of them. And, you know, we were really ready to hit the road running, and then it turned out with COVID. So, you know, we basically are still active, you know, we're, we have attended, you know, court cases and, and, you know, gatherings in regard to the billboards, you know, that are being introduced to be put up in Haverford Township. We also are very active with our community and our membership in regard to getting out, you know, vote information and any changes that there would be, and, you know, where do you go to vote, and how do you vote by mail, you know, with the 2020 election? So, you know, we have a website, we have, we have an email account, we're very active, and we're really looking forward to working with our new commissioner, and just want to kind of introduce Brinford Civic Association to you, and congratulate, and welcome, and we look forward to working with you.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just briefly, in responding to the citizens' comments in regard to the library, I, at our presentation last month, the expected cost of renovation expansion was approximately sixteen and a half million. Issues about the parking situation, we are still exploring options with the library to try to resolve this issue, and we are exploring various grants to help to defray the cost. In regards to Jack's Way, Mr. Williams' comments, I think we discussed that in some depth at the work session, this was the, always the plan to accept this street from the time the development was planned, the township had agreed to that. Mr. Morinelli, again, I congratulate you on your website, it's very extensively researched. I'm sure we can have discussions about whether we can use some of your website to be, material to be placed on our website, it can be an ongoing discussion. And finally, in Mr. Wolf's comments, we will be voting on this later tonight. Do any of the other Commissioners have any comments to make? There being none, let's return to the Police Week acknowledgment, Mr. Demilio.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I welcome all the police officers here this evening. Please allow me to lament for a minute. You know, Michael Jordan once said that he played nine, he missed 9,000 shots during his career. He also missed many times game-winning shots. He lost over 300 games, and he considered himself a failure, but those failures made him a success. And I guarantee you, in law enforcement, there are going to be failures. Criminals will be released, cases will be dropped, victims will be revictimized again, but you, police officers, you persevere. You go out every day and you do your jobs. You do not expect a thank you, you do not want praise. Your satisfaction is that you care about your community and the results that you get by doing your job, and you do it well. So, I want to thank you, every one of you, for the job that you do. You are a success, and we thank you for your efforts. So, I'm proud to, I'm proud to read this proclamation. Reclaiming National Police Week and Police Officers Memorial Day, whereas police officers of Haverford Township have worked devotedly and selflessly on behalf of the people of Haverford Township regardless of the peril or danger to themselves, and whereas these officers have safeguarded the lives and property of the residents of Haverford Township, and whereas these men and women by their patriotic service and their dedicated efforts have earned the gratitude of the residents of Haverford Township. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Commissioners of Haverford Township calls upon its residents to observe the week of May 9th to May 15th, 2021 as Police Week. Be it further proclaimed that the Commissioners of Haverford Township calls upon the community to observe May 15th, 2021 as National Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in the service to their community. Reclaimed this 10th day of May 2021, Township of Haverford Board of Commissioners, Gerald Hart, President, and Dave Berman, Township Manager. Congratulations. Commissioners, normally we give out commendations to officers who have performed above their normal duties during roll call, but we felt this year with the bad times we've had in the past year and the officers, how they worked tirelessly through a very bad situation with the COVID, we wanted to recognize all the officers for the job they do, and I think that in the times that police aren't always appreciated, in these very difficult times, I think it's, it's more important that we recognize our officers and show our residents and our Commissioners what our officers do every day of the week without, as Steve said, without, without asking for anything but just to go home safely the end of the day. So, thank you. If I could have any officers who are here, Officer Gill, are you here? Would you come up, please? Officer Huguenere, Officer Hughes, Officer Kelly, Officer McDonald, Officer Martha, and Officer Patterson. Some of the officers had to leave their own duty and they had to answer a call. So these officers are receiving a distinguished unit commendation. On Sunday, April the 11th, 2021, at 5:11 hours, police were dispatched to 10,001 Hunter's Lane for burglary in progress. Delcom, who's our dispatch center, advised a female caller, advised a female caller stated that someone was in her house. Delcom advised, they then got a call from another person at the same address advising that the actress had guns. Upon arrival, police surrounded the house to form a perimeter. While officers were in the rear of the house, a black male poked his head up in one of the windows and stated, "Who's there?" Police advised him that they were on the scene, and the male disappeared from the window and could be heard yelling inside. Police then heard glass breaking coming from the second floor. Yelling was then heard from the front of the residence. Two Asian females were seen at the front door of the residence. Officers escorted the females across the street behind the cover of a parked patrol vehicles. The two females advised that there are two more male family members inside the residence and one black male actor. The female advised that they only saw one actor, and they never saw him with a weapon. Officers found that the actor climbed out of a second-story window onto the roof of the carport. Police aligned the ladder under the roof, and the male was directed to climb down. He was covered with blood and could not safely grip the ladder. Officers Gill and Kelly assisted the male off the ladder to the ground where he's taken into custody. The suspect identified as Sean Cuff stated people with guns were chasing him, and he ran to his house for shelter. Because all of these officers worked together as a unit displaying professionalism, good police instincts, they were able to gain custody of Sean Cuff. For these reasons, illicit officers are being awarded this distinguished unit commendation. Congratulations. Officers Brawley, DeSantis, and Travalline, are you here? Come on up, please. I'm sorry, Sergeant DeSantis, I apologize. On Saturday, February 27th, 2021, at 0:38 hours, police fired EMS for dispatch to 131 Joanna Road for a building fire. Responding officers arrived on location before fire at EMS and found the rear of 131 Joanna Road fully engulfed in fire. Officers Brawley and Travalline attempted to gain entry along the side doors, and were unable to successfully force entry, moved their efforts to the front door of the residence, where Officer Travalline broke the glass with his baton, and Sergeant DeSantis reached in and opened the interior door. Upon Sergeant DeSantis entering the residence, Maeve Tang appeared and was removed collectively by Sergeant DeSantis, Officer Brawley, and Officer Travalline. When Detective Lachlan later interviewed the victim, Ms. Tang, she reported that she was awoken by the sounds of banging on the door. Upon seeing the fire in the residence, she went to the front door but was unable to unlock it as she was panicking. It was at this point that responding officers forced entry through the front door and brought her to safety. Throughout the incident, officers communicated effectively, acted efficiently, therefore safely managing the scene. For this reason, Sergeant DeSantis, Officer Brawley, and Officer Travalline are being awarded distinguished unit commendation. Congratulations.
Sergeant Coleman, Detective Flynn, Officer Fuller, Detective Goodman, Sergeant McCrae, and Officer Valola. On Wednesday, November 18th, 2020, approximately 15:45 hours, Haverford Police were dispatched to the apartment complex located 401 Lanark Avenue for a report of a female male domestic. Officer Fuller and Officer McCrae arrived and knocked on the door of apartment 11. Upon knocking a second time, announced the police were at the door, an unknown white male later identified as Roy Haring opened the door. At the time, Officer McCrae detected odor of burnt marijuana. Officer McCrae then asked, "Who else was in the apartment?", and Haring stated, "No one." Officer McCrae stated to Haring that the call was for a female male domestic, which Haring stated the female went out back. Officer McCrae entered the apartment to ensure that no female was in the back room needing police assistance. Upon airing the back of the apartment, he observed an unknown white male later identified as Gerard Peak sitting on the bed. Officer McCrae observed Peak attempting to put an unknown item into a black box, then put it on the floor. Officer McCrae observed a mirror and a tray with white residue and a razor blade on it in a clear bag that did contain green vegetable matter inside. Also observed was a pipe commonly used to ingest narcotics along with a mason jar of plastic bags. Officer Fuller placed Haring in the cussing recovered from him, rolled cigarette, but green vegetable matter also recovered from Haring were several plastic baggies of white residue and clear baggie with clear rock-like substance, led to be crystal meth. The source was obtained for the apartment where additional drugs, needle, drug paraphernalia and cash was discovered along with a semi-automatic weapon which resembled a Beretta 92F. Officers' actions subsequent investigation took two serious narcotic dealers off the street. For these reasons, illicit officers are being awarded this distinguished unit commendation. Lieutenant Michael Glenn, Sergeant Brian Coleman, Detective Michael Flynn, Detective Jerry Goodman, Officer Robert McCrae, Officer Joseph Fuller, and Officer Chris Valoa.
And that'll be retired Officer Lieutenant Glenn, by the way. Officer Linker, Officer Patterson, Officer Martha.
On Monday, December 28th, 2020, at 6:19 hours, Haverford Township Police were dispatched to 25 West Eagle Road for the report of a building fire. Officer Patterson, Martha, and Linker arrived on location at 6:21 hours and observed smoke coming from the rear of the building. These officers attempted to gain entry to the apartment through the rear door but were met with heavy smoke conditions. At this time, apartment resident Kathleen Heindl appeared at a first-floor window. She was covered in soot and experiencing respiratory difficulty due to heavy smoke exposure. Officer Patterson, Martha, and Linker acted quickly to extricate Heindl from the building. Her care was then turned over to Narberth paramedics who transported Heindl to Crozier Chester Medical Center. All five Haverford Township Fire companies, along with Brumall and Pennwind Fire companies, responded to extinguish the blaze. Officers Patterson, Martha, and Linker instinctively acted in a heroic manner. Their actions were exceptional and beyond the requirements of routine duty. Officers Patterson, Martha, and Linker are a credit to themselves, Haverford Township, and the Haverford Township Police Department. For their actions, they are hereby awarded this official commendation for a life-saving event. Officer Patterson and Officer Nyhart.
This commendation is awarded to an officer who performs a life-saving act under extraordinary circumstances, whereas the officer took direct, immediate, and positive action to preserve the life of another human being who was in danger of dying. The action taken by the officer did prevent the loss of human life, and the circumstances of the act were such that any delay in providing assistance would, in all probability, have resulted in the person's death. On Sunday, January 17th, 2021, at 0:319 hours, Haverford Township Police were dispatched to 2820 Haverford Road for a medical emergency. Officer Patterson was the first to arrive and found the victim sitting in a living-room chair. Teresa Victoria, 65 years old, was having respiratory difficulty. Officer Patterson instructed the victim to refrain from speaking and focus on her breathing while he awaited EMS to arrive. Officer Patterson observed the victim lose consciousness, turn blue in the face, and stop breathing. Officer Patterson alerted the medics, who had just arrived in the driveway. He then moved the victim from the chair to the floor and began life-saving CPR. Officer Nyhart arrived as backup, and the two officers did provide CPR until the EMS crew arrived inside. Officer Patterson and Nyhart did continue rescue breathing and chest compressions while the medical crew treated and transported the victim to Britmore Hospital. Medic Victorberg did verify that the victim had made a full recovery and was released from the hospital. Officer Patterson and Officer Nyhart instinctively acted in a heroic manner and provided life-saving treatment at the most critical stage. They maintained their composure under difficult circumstances and played a major role in saving a life. Their actions were exceptional and beyond the requirements of routine duty. Officer Patterson and Officer Nyhart are a credit to themselves, Haverford Township, and the Haverford Township Police Department. For their actions, they are hereby awarded this official commendation for a life-saving event.
This is a big one, so bear with me. Chief John Viola, Deputy Chief Joe Hagan, Lieutenants Michael Glenn and Craig Scott, Sergeant Steve Zambon, James Reynolds, Shawn Pendrosian, Dennis Donnelly, Officer Stephen Lane, Robert McCrae, Ryan McGuire, Joseph Fuller, Matthew Woffelman, Kevin Hanna, Anthony Marchesani, Corey Watkins, and Detectives Goodman, Stephen Lachlan, Michael Flynn, and Mark Johnson.
On Thursday, October 22nd, 2020, Haverford Township Police were dispatched to Palm Bear Club, 2632 County Line Road for a shooting. Upon police arrival, a large group was gathered in front of the club, which directed police to the rear of the property where the victim was located, laying on the ground in front of the back door with an obvious gunshot wound at a right groin area. Police immediately rendered first aid, applied direct pressure to the wound until medical personnel arrived on scene. Police attempted to obtain information from the victim, but to no avail as he was uncooperative. More officers arrived on scene and secured the front of the business, as well as the interior where the shooting had occurred. The rear of the property had also been secured at this time. On-scene officers quickly began interviewing witnesses and gathering information. From information received from bystanders, numerous pedestrian investigations were in conduct in order to identify possible suspects. Command staff and detectives then arrived and took control of the scene. The information gathered by officers was relayed to detectives, who then began to process the scene for evidence. In just a short period of time, Haverford Township detectives, along with the County Investigations Division, had developed a suspect and had gathered enough evidence for an arrest warrant to be issued and approved. On-scene Haverford Township Police personnel exhibited extraordinary professionalism in the midst of a chaotic scene, which led to a quick identification and issuance of an arrest warrant for the shooting suspect. For this outstanding accomplishment, as a result of teamwork, illicit officers are being awarded the distinguished unit commendation.
Can I have all the officers come forward, please? Any officers in the lobby or not in uniform, they can come up also. Before we get started, Commissioners, Officer Ed Mitzer is the wall way down on the end here. He's been off injured on duty for the past two years, was a severe ankle injury. He's going through numerous procedures, and it's been very difficult, I'm sure, for him through this period of time, so I hope you wish him well. Commissioners, every year, we, sergeants and the command staff meet in May, and they, obviously, individual sergeants nominate a individual officer for Officer of the Year. This year, everyone felt unanimously that it should go to the entire police department for the job that they did during these very difficult times. So I'll read this Officer of the Year for the year 2021, 20 and 21. "In March of 2020, the entire world was in the beginning stages of the COVID-19 pandemic. Countries were seeing people getting sick and dying in vast numbers. As the virus spread throughout the United States, so did the fear of getting sick or dying as the death toll numbers began to rise. The country began to see industries, businesses, and communities go into lockdown. The entire Haverford Township Police Department continued to protect and serve the community. Officers left to safety of their homes and their families behind to go to uncertain environments to serve the community. Officers continued to handle not only the regular calls for service, but civil unrest and large-scale events such as the Black Lives Matter march in June of 2020. During pandemic, the pandemic, the officers handled over 47,000 calls for service in which any one of the contacts with the public could lead to a possible COVID-19 exposure. The year of 2020 has been described as one of the most trying years for mankind in this century. The mission of the Haverford Township Police Department is to improve the quality of life throughout the township by providing a secure community environment through the delivery of police services in an efficient and effective manner. We, the Haverford Township Police Department, are dedicated to protecting all persons and fostering a positive relationship of cooperation and understanding between the police department and the citizens of Haverford Township. In 2020, every officer of the Haverford Township Police Department is deserving of the Officer of the Year for the dedication and service to the residents of Haverford Township during these unprecedented, unprecedented times. It's been an honor to serve you during, have you officers serve with me during this time, and I know it was difficult coming to work, leaving your families, and what we faced, so much uncertainty. You worked hard, you worked tirelessly, and we all came through it successfully. So congratulations to every officer of the Haverford Township Police Department." Commissioners, thank you for your indulgence. This concludes our awards ceremonies.
Chief, thank you, and all the officers for your ongoing service.
Chief, thank you, and all the officers for your ongoing service. Yeah. Okay, let's get back started again. And we thank the officers for, it's been a very trying year, appreciate their ongoing Next item on the agenda is a proclamation by Commissioner Siegel for Mr. George Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, we, you know, we're without the public here, we'd have Mr. Campbell here. The proclamation reads as follows: "Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, wish to recognize and honor longtime Haverford Township resident George Campbell for his selfless service; and whereas born and raised in Lower Marion, George is a 17-year-old, tried to enlist to serve in World War II but was denied because of his age until age 18. George is recognized by the Quilts of Valor Organization for his service in the Pacific during World War II, and for more than three decades, he has volunteered his time with the Haverford High School Sports, leading him to be enshrined in 2011 in the Haverford High School Sports Hall of Fame. He's known to his family and friends as a humble man, but he remains active in the community, including taking classes at the adult school. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania hereby offers its congratulations and wishes its blessings in all future endeavors to George Campbell. Proclaim this 10th day of May, 2021, the Board of Commissioners, Jerry Hart, President." Thank you.
Thank you.[796.91][796.91](APPLAUSE). Mr. Campbell does attend probably every high school sporting event, he's a regular attendee. The next item is a proclamation for Children's Mental Health Week. "Whereas good mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development, and Children's Mental Health Awareness Week provides the opportunity to focus on this important matter while celebrating the accomplishments of children and families affected by mental health concerns. And whereas, one in five children experiences or will experience a mental health disorder. And whereas, research has shown early identification and appropriate treatment of mental health disorders among children and adolescents provide them better opportunities to lead full and productive lives. And whereas, children and youth with mental health challenges and their families benefit from access to timely services and supports that are family-driven, youth-guided, and culturally appropriate. They also benefit from the integration of behavioral health in primary care, education, and child welfare. And whereas, it is important that children and adolescents, along with their families and communities, learn about the warning signs of mental health disorders and where to obtain necessary assistance and treatment. And whereas, obtaining a full and accurate diagnosis of a child requires gathering information from diverse sources, including the family, school, and others involved with the child. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Township of Haverford Board of Commissioners thus hereby proclaim, mark May 2nd to 8th, 2021, Children's Mental Health Awareness Week, proclaim this 10th day of May, 2021, Township of Haverford." Thank you.[919.44][919.44](APPLAUSE). Next item on the agenda is the Bureau of Fire update, Commissioner Wexler.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, it's my pleasure to report the statistics for April of 2021. The Haverford Township Bureau of Fire responded to 88 incidents in the month of April. The membership response total for members responding to calls was 1,003 members. Weekly combined training was 860 hours for the month. Brookline Fire Company has completed extensive training on their new foam engine. All the equipment has been mounted, and the engine is now in service. The Bonair Fire Company has recently completed several upgrades to the rescue truck. New LED scene lighting has been installed, and the SCBA air bank has been updated to allow the filling of the new NFPA standard SCBA bottles, which are the individual bottles on each fireman wears on his back into a fire. There was one firefighter injury on Sunday, April 4th, he was transported to Bryn Mawr Hospital and returned home several days later. In April, five members of the Bureau of Fire completed the following training. National Pro Board firefighter one, five members. National Pro Board Fire Officer one, two members. National Pro Board Fire Officer two, three members. National Pro Board Fire Officer four, two members. National Pro Board Rescue Technician, two members. Emergency Vehicle Operations Certification, two members. And Pennsylvania State Fire Academy Pump Operations Two Class, two members. That completes the activity for the month for the fire companies.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, just, Mr. President, I just want to remind the public that these are volunteer firefighters.
Correct.
They're not paid firefighters. I know that many residents sometimes believe that they are paid because they move from the city, from Philadelphia to Haverford Town, don't know that they're all volunteers. So they're taking the time out of their families and their busy schedules to do this training. So thank you to all of them.
Thank you, thank you for pointing that out again.
Next on the agenda is the Township Auditor update, Mr. Anderson.
Hello, yes, I've reviewed the warrants and expenditures for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you, that was a quick one from you, Ross.
Definitely.
You're welcome.
No sports update.
Thank you, Ross.
I do want to say one thing, I am sorry to hear about the loss of, I know. I am sorry to hear about the loss of Andy Lewis, I can't imagine, it's shocking to me, I can't imagine what the Commissioners are feeling after that, those that were very close to him.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Mr. Berman's Township Manager update.
Good evening, everyone. Last week, Governor Wolf did announce that many of the COVID-19 mitigation orders would be relaxed beginning around Memorial Day, and so this is good news. It represents the beginning of our return to a normal life. For our part, we're planning to open the Commissioners' meeting in June, that's the June 14th meeting to the public. We're still going to provide an option for remote participation via Zoom, but we are going to open the meeting to the public, I think the room can accommodate approximately 43 people, under the current guidelines, that is. As always, the details will be based on the latest guidance from CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health. Based on that new guidance, we are thrilled to announce the opening of additional spots at our playground locations and the removal of the three-week limit for families. In order to provide an opportunity for every family to register, we're going to temporarily close playground registration on Friday, May 14th, and it will reopen for registration on Monday, May 17th, at 8:00 a.m. Those who've already registered may have some issues, you have to be sure to check all of the boxes in the red pop-up box when you go ahead and register. This will enable you to move forward and complete the registration process. Also, we're happy, so happy to tell you that the Haverford Township Day Committee has met, and although it may look a little bit different this year, depending on the guidance at that time, we are moving forward with plans for Haverford Township Day on Saturday, October 2nd, and so that's the plan. Unless things change, we're going to continue to move forward, and we'll have more detail as that date approaches. And on both of those issues, if you have questions, you could feel free to call the Recreation Department, 610-446-9397. And lastly, many folks have been vaccinated, but not everyone, and I'll put a plug in there, we'd like those who have not been vaccinated to please, please consider doing so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'd second that. It's generally very good news. Next on the agenda is the Approval of Minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. D'Amelio.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 12th, 2021.
Air Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oliva. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
I abstain as I was not present and have not reviewed them.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 10, Approval of Warrants.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number five of 2021 totaling $7,759, I'm sorry, $7,591,920.20 comprising the General Sewer Fund payroll for April 15th of 2021 in the amount of $642,274.91. General Sewer Fund payroll for April 29th, 2021 in the amount of $718,532.79. General Fund Disbursement Number Five of 2021 in the amount of $2,270,221.67. Central, I'm sorry, the Sewer Fund Disbursement Number Five of 2021 in the amount of $1,047,963.42. Community Development Block Grant Fund Disbursement Number Five of 2021 in the amount of $65,589.86. Capital Project Fund Disbursement Number Five of 2021 in the amount of $337,320.98. An ACH withdrawal to the PA Office of Unemployment Benefits in the amount of $3,075.88. Debt service on the 2016 general obligation issue bond interest in the amount of $115,516.25. Debt service on the 2008 general obligation issue bond principal and interest in the amount of $2,028,223.75. Debt service on the 2020 GO issue, general obligation issue for bond principal and interest in the amount of $359,246.25. A credit card statement ending April 27th, 2021 in the amount of $3,954.44.
Oh, $3 million?
What'd I say?
You said $3 million for that credit.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought I was reading my credit card statement, yeah, I apologize. The township's credit card statement ending April 27th of 2021 in the amount of $3,954.44.
Air Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wexler, who's listening carefully.
Mr. President, I'm sure that would have been caught by our auditor, as he caught anything else that was incorrect or of interest, he raised it to our township personnel, they all answered his questions satisfactorily, he has no problem with these warrants, nor do I, I recommend we approve them.
Mr. Berman, could you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
I've heard the auditor state that he's reviewed and found no irregularities, he also had his questions answered, the head of the Finance Committee is recommending approval, yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I think the record should reflect that Mr. McCluskey's first official act as a Commissioner was to approve spending $7.6 million, I think we should all give him a hand for that.
McCabe.
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 Yeah.
Yeah, he's been here a little while.
I've had a bad, I'm sorry, I had a very bad day, we had a flood in our house today. Commissioner.
You're worried about that credit card debt, I think.
Yeah, I'm worried about that too, yeah, seriously, congratulations on your first vote, Commissioner McCabe.
Item number 11, Settlement and Stipulation of Counsel.
Mr. President, and boy, I hope I get these right.
Do you want me to read it?
Mr. President, I move we approve the settlement and stipulation of counsel in the matter of Haverford Township School District initiated property tax assessment appeal for property located at 48 West Eagle Road, DC Folio number 22-03-00908-00, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, docket number 2020-009355, and authorize our counsel and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents.
Air Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCluskey. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, might I recommend for the next one that we, solicitor's approval, that we could just do these by voice acclamation, after I read this one? I move we approve the settlement and stipulation of counsel in the matter of the above, I'm sorry, approve the settlement and stipulation of counsel in the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for property located at 2418 Hurst Terrace, DC Folio number 22-03-01333-00, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number 20, docket number 2021-001101, and authorize our counsel and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Siegel. Mr. Byrne, did you hear the question?
I did, yeah, and I'm very comfortable with it, I've been, I know Mr. Gutell for a long time, he represents both the township and the school district in these matters, and I can tell he drives a hard bargain, so these are really completely fair settlements to us, and I think the voice vote will be fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, there be none, motion's passed, Mr. Holmes.
President, I move we approve the settlement and stipulation of counsel in the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for property located at 617 Railroad Avenue, DC Folio number 22-05-00924-00, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, docket number 2020-008254, and authorize our counsel and proper officers of the board to execute necessary documents.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Siegel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, I move we approve the settlement and stipulation of counsel in the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for property located at 17 Cooper Town Road, DC Folio number 22-04-00144-01, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, docket number 2021-008505, and authorize our counsel and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Siegel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, I move we approve the settlement and stipulation of counsel in the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for property located at 912 Haverford Road, DC Folio number 22-05-00397-00, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, docket number 2020-008362, and authorize our counsel and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Siegel, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, I move we approve settlement and stipulation of counsel in the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for property located at 2 Drexel Ave, DC Folio number 22-09-00624-00, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County... Pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, docket number 2020-008106. And authorize our counsel and proper officers of the board to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wexler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item number 12, ordinance number P8, 2021, traffic, traffic second reading.
Motion to adopt second reading ordinance number P8, 2021, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highway. Establish parking time limited. Railroad Avenue East Side from Walnut Lane to Millbrook Lane, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, two-hour limit. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times. Railroad Avenue West Side from Walnut Lane to Millbrook Lane.
Second. Second by Commissioner Oliva. Any comments?
Is this addressing, does this address the issue that was?
This was, right.
And we already passed this a month ago?
Yes. There any discussion?
Was there a complaint about signage going up until, was that in the letter?
I think the complaint was about signage, about that some of the signage ultimately restricts residents or residents' guests from parking in the area, and that I think the gist of the argument is that the Havreford School should be providing more parking on campus, and that the township is in fact responding to an overflow from the, from the students.
Guess we'd have to make the same demands of SEPTA and Havreford High School in each of those neighborhoods as well. It's a conundrum we'll never solve, I'm afraid.
I'm assuming that the two-hour limit helps the residents during, I mean, is to not have students there all the time, right?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, the issue's the same we have everywhere else.
Yeah.
It's, you know, we don't have people driving around and forcing every single parking ordinance at all times, but, you know, they have, there's cars that some residents are very upset about cars from Havreford School, and some residents are then upset that those ordinances apply to them.
Well, can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good.
Mr. Berman, could you call the roll?
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
No. Item number 13, ordinance number P9, 2021, Jack's Way's dedication, first reading.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P9, 2021, accepting dedication of a certain street identified as Jack's Way, Havertown, Pennsylvania, as public land.
Second. Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any comments? I think we did address this at the work session.
Did address, I'll address it just briefly based upon the comment of the gentleman from Pantry Road. He identified that it's not in the benefit of the taxpayer. These people, these are newer homes. They pay some of the highest tax rates that we have here in the township. I think it's fair that we plow their street, pick up their trash, and maintain the road just like we do every other road in the township, so, especially with the high tax rate that the newer homes generate for here, so. I don't think it's unfair to the other taxpayers in the township, is my point.
I think it would be unfair to these taxpayers, to those taxpayers, not to do the same thing that we do everywhere else in the township.
Absolutely, I agree. Thank you, Mr. Oliva.
Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 14, resolution number 22.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2220-2021, authorizing the filing of the formal RACB application and business plan to assist with financing of the renovation project at Havreford Township Free Public Library.
Second. Second by Commissioner Oliva. I think this somewhat addresses the first letter that we had tonight.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is one of the ways where we're going to try to get additional funding through various grants. In part, first step to getting that funding through grants is to fill out the application, so.
Mr. Berman.
Everybody to fill it up.
Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 15, resolution number 2221, 2021, Finance Department reimbursements.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt resolution number 2221 of 2021, approving a resolution of the township of Havreford, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, declaring the township's official intent with respect to reimbursements from proceeds of tax-exempt obligations, capital expenditures made or to be, to be made for certain projects, providing for certain related matters, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date.
Second. Second by Commissioner Siegel. Any comments?
This is something we talked about last week. This is the first step. This is not actually incurring debt, but this is the first step we take, which enables us to look backwards several months and forwards from now on. To the extent that we spend any money on any of the listed capital projects in this resolution, we are able to reimburse ourselves from the tax exempt, from the proceeds of the tax-exempt bonds that we issue in the future for these projects. And we have a several-page, two-page resolution, and then attached to that page is an Exhibit A, which describes the projects. And as I said last week, the projects include library renovations and improvements, acquisition of fire apparatus, park and recreation improvements, solar panels on the township buildings, Darby Creek Trail Extension, the acquisition of ambulances, and facility improvements at the Public Works Yard. And I recommend we pass the resolution.
Any comments? Mr. Berman, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 16, resolution number 2222, 2021, revised land development plans for 1315 Lawrence Road.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Siegel.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2222-2021, approving the preliminary slash final land development and minor subdivision plans for Havreford Mr. Storage LLC for the properties located at 850 and 1,000 North Eagle Road, Havreford Township, Delaware County, and known as DC Folios number 22-01-00366-01 and 22-01-00727-00, was approved subject to conditions by the Board of Commissioners, resolution number 2149-2019, on August 12, 2019, and that the recommendation of the Shade Tree Commission and the Planning Commission have been reviewed and the landscape design required as a condition of approval for the preliminary land development and minor subdivision plans for Havreford Mr. Storage LLC is approved.
Second. Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any comments? Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 17, resolution number 2223, 2021, Commissioner's support of the use of radar and LiDAR.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. DiMillo.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number 223-2021, supporting House Bill 606 and other legislation containing these or similar provisions.
Second. Second by Commissioner Oliva. Any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, as you know, the police are limited on what they can do for speeding, and currently in municipalities, there isn't, they don't have the ability to use radar, and we're asking that the House pass a bill that would allow local police departments to have the use of radar, which would make their job a hell of a lot easier than what we're doing now. As we all know, in this township and other municipalities, there is obviously speeding issues, severe speeding issues, and I also want to remind the public that school will be letting out whatever children be out playing in our streets, that we need these, we need these provisions to allow the police to really deal with the speeding. So I would ask that the public really should contact their state representatives and garner support for this.
And this, what this does is it allows the, using the radar instead of a stopwatch or VAS car is what they, they use, allows them to stop cars at five miles an hour rather than 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. So it gives them more, more ability to stop the people who are speeding.
Do we know when, is the House going to vote on this bill? Do you know?
It's up this year, and I thank you for bringing this up. And my other role as President of Delaware County First Class Commissioners Group, this is a point of emphasis for, for all townships in Delaware County, and it's, as you mentioned, it's very important that everybody contact their state representative directly. They want to see overwhelming support. They want to pass it through this legislative house. It's languished for the last two years. I think they have a better shot this year, but they need, they need nudge, especially Commissioner Vitale or State Representative Vitale. But please call your state rep to get it through the House. Senate, I think, is going to pass, but in the House, it stands a chance of being blocked by one of the caucus groups, so please call your state rep wherever you are.
It did, after our conversation last week, speak with State Representative Zabel, and he indicated, when I mentioned that this was coming up, that he fully supports this and is one of the cosponsors of the bill.
Yep.
Good, and I thank him for that. This is something that I know we've talked about in our meeting for, God, it has to be 10 years that I know of.
Call the roll.
Mr. Berman, could you call the roll?
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Resolution number, item number 18 is resolution number 2224, 2021, announcement of a public hearing zoning map, zoning map amendment for 833 Buck Lane, Havreford.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Oliva.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2224, 2021, that the township of Havreford is considering an amendment to its zoning chapter of the general laws of the township of Havreford by reclassifying the zoning districts of the property located at 833 Buck Lane, Havreford, PA, known as Delaware County Folio number 2205001300, from INS Industrial, I'm sorry, Institutional District 2R1A Low Density Residential.
Second. Second. Second by Commissioner McCloskey. Any comments? I think we discussed this as well at the work session. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 19, resolution number 2225, 2021, watershed restoration and protection grant.
Mr. President, motion to adopt resolution 2225, 2021, that Havreford Township hereby requests a watershed restoration and protection program grant in the amount of $300,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority for stream restoration activities in a portion of Cobb's Creek along Caricon Drive.
Second. Second by Commissioner Oliva. Any comments? Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 20, contract awards, demolition of the former Brookline School.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Siegel.
Motion to award the demolition of the former Brookline School contract to Terra Technical Services, Downingtown, PA, in the amount of $381,000, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holmes. Just before we go on, since this is my award, just wanted to review the history with this. This board's original stated intent when we acquired the Brookline School from School District in 2019 was to either move our library to Brookline or demolish the building and expand the existing park. At the time of the township acquisition, the school district had planned on selling the building as they had no anticipated district use for the building, which was requiring significant investment to maintain. After examining the school, the library board and their architectural team informed the board of commissioners that the existing structure would not be suitable for a new library, and that any plans for a new library at Brookline would involve a new structure. Ultimately, this board voted not to move the library to the Brookline site, but rather voted to renovate and expand at its current Mill Road location. During the course of these deliberations, I, along with a number of other commissioners, became aware of the strong feelings of many residents had about preserving Brookline for both its architectural qualities and its historic importance to Havertown. In February of 2020, this board voted to table a similar vote on demolition in order to explore options for the preservation of the Brookline School. Unfortunately, we could not find a future use for the building, nor a means of financing a renovation that would have been acceptable to the majority of our board. I have gained an appreciation of what the Brookline School building means to many of our residents and to the school's alumni, but at this point, I do not believe, I do believe we need to move forward with the demolition. The building has been vandalized on several occasions, and many residents in the surrounding area have expressed concerns about the negative impact it is having on their neighborhood. While I recognize this will be of little solace to those who feel strongly about Brookline's preservation, the demolition will result in a somewhat rare opportunity to expand green space in Havreford Township. I would envision that an expanded park will pay homage to its history by making use of some of the building stones in its development. Any other commissioners have any comments?
I have a, I have a few, a few, a few, a few things to say. When do we plan to start, start this so we can inform our awards, because it would affect us?
Mr. Berman, you correct me if I'm wrong. I think we're hoping that this will probably be within a couple of months the process
be within a couple of months the process would be started.
Yes, I believe Mr. Pinone was working on that, but I would say we would start within the next month or so, maybe six weeks. Hopefully, it'd be done late summer, early fall. I'd ask Mr. Pinone to correct me if I'm wrong.
And I, along with Matt Ario and Jerry, worked hard on this to try and save it. And I remember when we tabled it, I said we need to exhaust everything. And I will reluctantly be voting yes tonight to demolish it, but I just want everybody to know that we tried everything and we worked with everybody to try and find ways to save this school. And we just couldn't do it. And I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, I, again, I just want to reiterate what Connor said about the school. We, you know, it's a piece of our history. We don't want to lose it, but there's really nothing we can do here. We exhausted all the avenues, and so we're at this point. So I will reluctantly be voting yes tonight.
This is part of the contract. After the demolition, the area will be graded. It will be filled in, and grass will be planted over the area that was demolished. There have been preliminary discussions with the Parks Department on a plan for the expanded park, but that will only occur after there's input from the community and from the Parks Board. So tonight, we would be voting on the demolition. It's not on what will be there following the demolition. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 24, Public Works Department to 2021 Road Program.
It's, yeah, item number 21, just for people following along. Motion to award 2021 Road Program contract to Allen Myers, Warchester, PA, in the amount of $1,341,450.10, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any discussion? Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 22, 87 octane gasoline and number two, fuel oil.
Mr. President, motion to award 87 octane gasoline contract to Papco, Inc., in Aston, PA, in the amount of $2.0948 per gallon, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Aliva. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. President, make a motion to award number two, fuel oil contract to Petroleum Traders Corporation, Fort Wayne.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the incorrect information made it to the agenda for this next item. It should be 2.0789, not 2.1960. So it's 2.0789.
A motion to award number two, fuel oil contract to Petroleum Traders Corporation, Fort Wayne, Indiana, in the amount of 2.0789, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
I think it's supposed to say a gallon. I'm sure the contract is.
Per gallon.
$2. Yeah.
Correct.
We have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Aliva.
I'm on it.
Berman, can you call the roll?
However, in artful, it's still a lower amount, so it's in our favor.
What's that?
However, in artful, that was said, it's still a lower amount, so good for us.
Thank you. Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. President, motion to approve proposal for painting of 100, 100 streetlight poles to Rafferty Painting and Power Washing, Inc., of Lansdowne, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $189 per pole or $19,800, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Mr. Berman, can you call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 23 is continuation of the Citizens Forum for Non-Agenda Items. Mr. Berman, is there any one out there?
No hands are raised at this time, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry, there is one hand raised. Doreen Sarr. Hand keeps going up and down. I'm not sure if you'd like to speak.
Unmute. Yes, I'd like to speak. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Go ahead.
Great. Well, first of all, welcome to Mr. McCabe, who is the new commissioner for the fifth ward. I'm Doreen Sarr. I'm representing the zoning committee of the Brynford Civic Association, and I want to alert our new commissioner and the board to an important and immediate issue in the fifth ward. And as you saw from the agenda tonight, traffic is a big problem in the fifth ward, as the Milbrook person noted. The owner of a property at the corner of Buck Lane and 701 Haverford Avenue has applied for variance. The property was a non-conforming use as a small deli market known as Tom's Market. There's great concern in Brynford throughout the community and particularly in Buck Lane because a restaurant is particularly inappropriate at that location, is contrary to the existing R6 residential zoning and the comprehensive plan. It will cause increased traffic on our streets, increased danger on Haverford Road and Buck Lane, loss of property values and commercialization at that end of Haverford Road, and potential further commercialization of the neighborhood. There's already traffic congestion on Buck Lane, and this is contrary to the comprehensive plan. The DCA representatives, the zoning committee, and others would like to meet with Mr. McCabe at his first earliest convenience because we have had no guidance during this period. Andy Lewis was very, very active with the DCA and active in protecting our interests and helping us through the many, many zoning issues that occur in this part of the fifth ward because of the fact that we have the most non-conforming uses of any part of Haverford Township. And it is really the point of the municipal code to ask those non-conforming uses to be returned to conforming uses, as the code suggests. That is sort of our guiding principle here. So I would like to ask Mr. McCabe if he would provide us with some contact information so that we could get together to talk about this. We have a zoning hearing board meeting on the 20th. The time is short. I'm not sure it's entirely fair for us to go through with this with so little guidance from our legislative representative, but that's sort of what I'm asking for now.
Oh, can I just?
Commissioner Aliva.
Could we have maybe Jim go to the zoning hearing board and ask for a continuance? Because to get Bernie up to speed on this issue?
Yeah, I think I've spoken to Mr. Byrne about doing that.
Okay.
But at the same time, we're, we as commissioners, I've talked about this 100 times, as individual commissioners, we don't have a say in this. We, as a township, can take a position in this, but it's the zoning board's decision first and foremost as to what it's going to do at this place. And if we want to send Mr. Byrne to, I mean, obviously, if Mr. McCabe wants to attend, he can. But if we want to send Mr. Byrne, and if he can report back to us that this is something that, when the zoning board makes this decision, is something that the township should express a position on, do we, do we need to delay it? I mean, will they delay it? How long have these folks been in front of it?
I'm sure they would delay it.
My understanding was that they were willing to delay it for a couple of weeks.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure we don't. Can I jump in here? Between what we do and, you know, what the zoning board is supposed to do. If this is obviously an issue of importance, not just to the fifth ward, but to the entire township, which is really the measure we should be doing when we're considering, you know, objections like this to something that's in front of the zoning board, I think we should be prepared to talk about and take a position as a board on it.
I'm just saying, in this, this is an extreme case. You know, the commissioner in the ward, very involved in that, in that particular case, and now Bernie's coming in, and he, you know, just give him a little time. This is extenuating circumstances. Just asking for a little time, and the zoning hearing board seems to be amenable to that.
Mr. Byrne, do you want to comment?
Yeah, if I could. I mean, you know, there are timing requirements in zoning hearings, you know, in terms of when you get them scheduled and how long you have to hear them once they get started and make a decision. You know, continuances are not unheard of, and, you know, in this circumstance, I don't think that it's unreasonable. I think I could ask them to, I think they meet like every, twice a month or every two weeks or so, the zoning hearing board. So I think that I could, with your authorization, ask for a continuance and so that, you know, I can get together with Commissioner McCabe and talk about it. I agree with Commissioner Holmes, that, you know, what you want to do is not, you know, particular to each site, but, you know, what, on the whole, you know, if you were sending me to object, I'd be sending you to object to the, you know, to upholding our ordinance. So, but I do understand, I mean, and this is a, you know, this is a very special circumstance with our dear friend Andy passing, and, you know, the people of the seventh ward are feeling, I think it's seventh ward, I'm not sure which ward, but are feeling a little, you know, left out. So I would be inclined to write the letter and then, you know, see if we can get a couple of weeks and then go from there.
So, thank you, Mr. Byrne. Look, I appreciate that point. I don't want to be get the wrong impression here. I don't have an opinion basically on this, on this issue right now before the board, but it seems to me that it's one of those few that's going to generate enough of an issue and enough of a concern that we, as a board, should consider it. There is the possibility, as Mr. Byrne described, that we might be out of judicial time to postpone this. So the time is now for us, as a board, to be advised by our zoning officers and by our solicitors to whether or not this is something we should be expressing a township interest in. That's all.
Yes. Yeah, I agree. And I didn't mean to say that you had an opinion. I just meant it was, you know, that what you said was right when you were explaining the process.
Yeah, no, I didn't think you were. I just wanted to make clear for the audience out there. I'm not on the other side of this issue or one side of this issue. I think this is one of those few that rises to the level of we ought to look at this as a board.
Yeah, and, you know, like I said, you know, I can write and ask for continuance and if with your authorization, with the board's authorization, I can write and ask for continuance. And then, you know, we'll have to react to whatever happens with respect to that, that request.
Do we need a vote to vote to have him ask for that continuance?
Jim, do we?
I mean, if we do.
Yeah, I think you should authorize me to request a continuance so that, you know, under these circumstances, that I can look into it and make sure that our new commissioner is brought up to speed and, you know, the residents are fully protected. And, but, yeah, I would need a vote from the board for that.
I make a motion to authorize our solicitor, Jim Byrne, to petition the zoning board for continuance.
Actually, I think we missed a step. We have to first add this to the agenda.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr.
May I just, I'm sorry, really quick, just wanted to squeeze this in there, since I am the zoning officer. The case was continued or requested to be continued by the applicant from their past meeting, which would have been last Thursday, to not this Thursday, but the following, so May 10. I don't have the file with me, so I cannot advise on what their timeframe is as far as a decision is required by the zoning hearing board, but that is where we are at the moment.
Yeah, in response to that, I think, you know, there's, there's timing requirements with respect to getting a hearing listed and started. I think, I believe that's off the top of my head, that's 60 days. And then I think, you know, that you have the hearings, and then at the conclusion of the hearings, you have 45 more days to make a decision. So we're kind of in the midst of this whole thing. And, you know, if the applicant has asked for a continuance for a couple of weeks, then, you know, I don't see that there's a big deal of the township asking for a continuance. So I think we'll be within the timelines. But that's what I'm saying, is I'd like to, you know, write to the board and Mr. Malone and get their opinion as to whether they will grant it or not, and then get back to you. And it wouldn't be a long continuous, two weeks or something, we're talking about.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I ask that we add to the agenda this evening to allow our solicitor, Mr. Byrne, to attend the zoning hearing or petition the zoning hearing board.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holmes. Have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Now I can make a motion to have our solicitor, Jim Byrne, I guess petition the zoning board for an extension.
Continuance.
Or continuance.
Yeah, that's right. Request an extension. Yep.
Make an extension on this matter.
The manner is 701.
701 buck. Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Have a voice vote again, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes. Thank you, Mr. Byrne.
Okay, I'll take care of it tomorrow. Thanks.
Mr. President, on this issue, might I suggest that the, within the confines of executive privilege, our solicitor and our zoning officer provide a summary to the rest of us as a board as to what's at issue and what's being requested in this issue and what the township, maybe identify our township interests in it, because I think no matter what, we're going to need to move fairly quickly.
Yeah.
And I could do that, Mr. President. That's not a problem. I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I have one thing further. I'd like to add to the agenda for next month. The, I would like the board to rename Community Park up at Haverford Reserve after Andy Lewis, call it Andy Lewis Community Park. I went in front of these, well, I didn't actually go because I couldn't make it, but the park board has voted to, you know, they have agreed to that. They, actually, it was their recommendation, as we were talking about doing the building, but they decided, their recommendation was to do the whole park. So I'd like to put that on the agenda, bring it up at the work session, and we can have a discussion about it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business? Commissioner Holmes, so you?
Well, I think I'll just raise another business. Want to report on the solar committee, but I can do that just on my turn. I mean, we're not going to act.
Okay, let's move on to other business. Commissioner Demilio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify, I received several emails and a phone call regarding a newsletter that went out with Commissioner Holmes had sent out regarding the vote that, on the library, on the supporting library for the renovations. And I think I was sent the newsletter. In the newsletter, it stated that Commissioner Connor and I voted not to support the library for the renovations. And that really wasn't the vote. The vote was that, I believe, we voted not to approve the additional $4 million. But it wasn't, it wasn't that we didn't support the renovations at all, it was that we just didn't support the $4 million.
I think the way. Like a chime, I'm in one bit. It was.
May. I, guilty as charged, and I apologize to both of you for how that was reported and how that was characterized. In the context of a conversation within the Democratic Party, what was, you know, what was my typical fiery political speech ended up being, you know, reported out as priorities for the township. The library is a very important priority for me. I never meant for anyone to suggest that you two didn't support bill remodeling and, you know, renovating the library on the site. And my comment at the time wasn't, look what these two did. In a direct, in an answer to a direct question, who didn't vote for the expanded renovation, I identified the two of you as folks who voted for the original renovation at the site. It certainly is not unreasonable for both of you to have read those comments and to have been offended by them. And I alone bear responsibility for that. And I apologize to you both sincerely. It was not my intention to suggest that you two did not support the library. It was not my intention at the time that. It was not my intention at the time that, that my comments were going to be reported out to the world as opposed to perhaps distilled and turned into something slightly more palatable for everybody else. So I humbly ask both of your forgiveness. I assure you, it was not intended on my part to mischaracterize either of your support for the library. And I appreciate you raising this, and this is the first time I'm hearing it. I would have apologized the first time if I'd gotten the impression that either of you were offended by that.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. And again, I did receive some phone calls and emails. Why didn't we support that? And I didn't even know about the newsletter until someone sent it to me, then I, I did see it. I would hope that the Democratic Party would put something out retracting that statement because a lot of people saw that. Obviously, it's social media and it goes out among the entire township.
So I, I.
If I can chime, chime in real fast.
I, I will go back and see what was written and to the extent that it is, because I don't have it. But if it, if it is still out there implying that the two of you do not support the project that you supported at the library, I will ask them to take it down. But to the extent that anybody is listening now, it was not my intention to mischaracterize your votes on that. And I, I appreciate you raising it with me.
And I appreciate your.
If I could chime in right, right now, thank you, Larry, because I received lots of emails,